Okay, we're gonna get started. Running for position one, which is a four-year term on the Richland City Council. Bob Thompson to my right and Rhoda Williams to my left. Candidates, I remind you that you have one and a half minutes to make your opening statement. We're gonna go in alphabetical order. Mr. Thompson, you are first. Your opening statement, please.
First off, I want to thank everybody for the opportunity to address you all. I've been fortunate to represent the citizens of Richland for a little over 20 years. And I always kinda look at the make of a man. Every day you look in the mirror on whether we're better off or worse off than when I walked in the door. I think the city of Richland's much better off. You know, when we got in, tax bases in Richland were defined by three things. There's property tax, there's sales tax. And we were really upside down on property tax. We made a decision to try to increase the property tax, lessen that to get more sales tax. And what we did, we opened up Queens Gate and we opened up Columbia Point. And what that did, it lessened the cost to everybody. I also looked at what was important to the city of Richland. What was important to the city of Richland was Hanford funding. Frankly, I've donated a lot of my time to national organizations to make sure that federal funding keeps coming in, to ensure cleanup dollars come in, and keep our workforce employed. You gotta understand, like, two-thirds of our disposable income in the city of Richland is based on Hanford funding. That's a big deal. Sometimes people lose sight of what's important in our community. The city of Richland is safer now than it was when I came on board. Some of that's demographic, some of it isn't. But the truth is, we made steps to try to make us safer, to make everybody equal and have an opportunity in the city. It's not a question, in my mind, of equal success. It's a question of equal opportunity. And I'll leave it at that.
All right, thank you. Ms. Williams?
Hello, everybody. Thank you for coming out tonight. I am a small business owner. I own Ms. Rhoda's Wine Garden. I've lived in the city of Richland for six years, in business for three of those years. I'm just the girl next door, someone you can sit down and have a cup of coffee with. I know how to listen and solve problems. I'm running because I feel like I owe this community for supporting me. The community gave me a home when I needed one. And for that, I thank them. Thank you for coming out tonight.
All right, thank you so much to both candidates for those opening statements. We'll move on to the question-answer session. As a reminder, one and a half minutes for your responses. Mr. Thompson, we'll start with you on question number one. Do you think it is beneficial for voters to know which political party endorses which candidates in local nonpartisan races? Why or why not?
You know, it's become interesting. This is the first time in my...I've been doing this for a long time, right? Over 20 years. This is the first time in the history of the city of Richland where partisanship became an issue. Truly. I've always been conservative nature, but never put a Republican flag on. But I will tell you that the opposition has come forward because a lot of this had to do with Trump's election. No matter how you feel about that, it doesn't matter. But it became very, very political. And as a result, things have become political in the city of Richland. You know, whether your lights turn on, whether you're safe, those aren't partisan issues. But I gotta tell you, this election has become that way. You know, to Rhoda's credit, and I always say that she has a lot of grace and a lot of class, she really does, that hasn't been an issue in our race. But I look around the board, it is a vibrant...it's a war out there. And I don't understand that. I really don't. I resent that to an extent. People have their view. That's fine, but it has very little to do with city politics. We're making decisions on, you know, abortion. We're not making decisions on fiscal responsibility on the federal budget. It's not what we do. We make our citizens safe every day. We make sure the lights turn on every day. We give everybody a fair shot at success every day. That's what the city of Richland is supposed to do. Frankly, we've been damn good at that.
Thank you. Ms. Williams?
Well, I believe that it shouldn't be about individuals running for office, however. I believe that these issues are...it's where we... I hate this. I believe that it's a place where...it's how I got started in this, actually, is because of the way, the direction of the country was going. And I try and choose my words because I am not what you call a political person, a politician. I just want to...I want things to be the way they used to be. It's like Bob said, it's not about waving the Republican flag or the American flag. It's about doing the right thing, is what it's all about. And that's where I'm at. I'm about doing the right thing for the people. I believe that the people of Richland needs to be heard. They have a voice, they need to be heard, and we need to make that happen. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. We'll move on to question number two. Ms. Williams, we'll start with you. In your opinion, how should the property on George Washington Way where the Crest Museum was be developed? Are you aware of any plans in the works? What would you suggest?
I am aware of the plans of that property. And I will be happy to see it...something done there. Because right now, I think the plans are, we're gonna have some development with businesses, and then on the backside of that, it would be apartments. And I think it's time for us to start beautifying our city, too, because right now, there are a lot of eyesores around town. And my opinion is that we need to slow down on some of these developments that we have going on and take notice on some of these eyesores, like the old Alberston Building, the old O'Reilly Building, the old McDonald's. Let's come up with some incentive programs for new small businesses to take over these spaces. And let's get some...let's get some attractiveness going on with this city, because right now, we have a lot of eyesores around town. And yeah, I...yeah, I would love to see that space developed. I would.
All right, thank you. Mr. Thompson?
So, we entered into a relationship with a developer from Illinois. There was conversations about having a...what is it? A farmer's market there, remember? But the problem with that is that the developer wanted to get public funding for a public facilities district. Oops, excuse me, but that doesn't go to a private developer. So all of a sudden, that went out the wayside. And there are a lot of people that are very disappointed on the concept that we don't get a farmer's market in the city of Richland. The developer has the right right now. He has an exclusive option to do what he wants. He could develop a farmer's market. He chose not to because economically, it wasn't feasible. Makes sense. What we've gone through, I think, our fifth or sixth rendition in regards to what he's gonna develop. Rhoda's partially not quite accurate. The idea is to have retail on the ground floor and then have apartments up above. And so it'll be the first time we actually have mixed use in the city of Richland. We've never done it before. We have storefronts down below, be a little bit like Seattle. And then you'll have condos or residences up above. So it's gonna be kind of an interesting thing that actually happens. It's gonna make...frankly, it'll be kind of fun to see whether or not that kind of idea about going up instead of out, the idea of urban sprawl, becomes a reality in the city of Richland. And so that is gonna happen in the next year. And we're all kinda looking forward to see whether the developer can finally pull that off. God knows, city council has wanted that hole filled in for a long time, trust me.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to question number three. Mr. Thompson, we'll start with you. Do you believe the city council should pass resolutions, thus taking a formal stand on social issues? For example, the Arlene's Flowers case. Why or why not?
No, you know, I think that city council's role in life is to provide an equal opportunity to everybody to be successful and provide equal opportunity. But social justice is kind of an interesting thing, isn't it? You know, I really have concerns when we decide to go out on an edge and say who's right or wrong on social issues. You know, there's a certain amount of banality...I looked this word up the other day. The idea that I've got an easy solution for very, very difficult social questions. I gotta tell you, I'm not convinced city council is well-adapted to do that, let alone get it right. You know what I mean? When you pass laws, you wanna pass laws that you can enforce, right? So the idea of diversity, sounds good. Who's against diversity? But then when you listen to the flip side, it's all about, well, we hate speech. Well, my god, what you're saying is, I wanna have diversity for me, but not for you. And you can only say what I want you to say. From a city council perspective, there's a lot of constitutionalists, you know, I'm an attorney and I get into that kind of stuff, maybe more similar. But your freedom depends on it. The people that you don't like, the people...you know, I observe the community. There's a lot of Democratic angst with Trump getting elected. I get that. But imagine giving the keys to Trump to determine what free speech is. How would you feel about that? And that's the reason why we have to resent and stop government from dictating who tells me what speech is and what's right and wrong.
Thank you. Ms. Williams?
You know, as a small business owner, I truly do not and will not judge anyone who comes into my business, no matter what my religion is, because that's not my job. And I feel like we all should be included. Don't pick who you will serve or not serve. And with that said, I think that we need to stop placing judgment on people and just let people be people. Let's include everybody. That's all.
All right, thank you so much. Okay, we'll move on to question number four. Ms. Williams, we'll start with you. We understand that you, Ms. Williams, would like the city council to weigh in on the minimum wage debate. Would you be in favor of the city of Richland determining its own minimum wage guidelines like the city of Seattle recently did, as opposed to following what the voters approved via last year's initiative on minimum wage for the state?
I would, because we are a small city here, and we can't keep up with, or we can't...we don't have the jobs to say, let's go out here and just increase everybody's wages to $15 an hour. Now, that would be nice, 'cause it would...perhaps we could sell more houses or things like that. But I know that it's a small city around here. I remember when I moved from Seattle to here, I made a lot more money before I moved here. And I realized that the cost of living is quite lower than Seattle. So yes, we should...we should be able to decide how much our increase is on wages.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Thompson?
So I'm gonna take the other side of this. You know, I actually pay attention to this kind of stuff out there. And this is not a city of Richland issue, it's a nationwide issue. And first off, the minimum wage was never designed to be a living wage, okay? I'm looking at the audience here. When you start, you're paying $1.68 an hour, $2.05 an hour. And the idea was to get a job, learn a work ethic, get a job, train, your employer, get somebody. So it's a kind of a quid pro quo in what you learn on a work ethic. The idea that a minimum wage has now become a livable wage is a falsehood. And what it really does is it hurts the people that it's designed to protect. Seattle's a classic example. The studies that came out of the University of Washington prove that what happens is people lose jobs. The number of hours that actually are resulted...imagine, you know, it's like Rhoda running her wine bar. All of a sudden, she's gotta pay $15 an hour, and all of a sudden, she can't keep anybody employed because there's no profit margin anymore. That's a hell of a place to be. It really is. But that's not unique to here. It's nationwide, and all the academic studies prove that. If the goal is to actually improve the life of people who are less fortunate than we are, having a $15 minimum wage hurts those very people. And there's a lot of science out there and studies that prove that. So to the extent that we wanna do that, you're hurting the people you're trying to help.
All right, thank you both. That's gonna conclude this session for position one. Both great candidates here, Bob Thompson, Rhoda Williams. Thank you both. Great job. Position number three, between Lloyd Becker to my right and Sandra Kent. Sandra Kent could not make it tonight, so Mr. Becker's gonna speak. And we'll give him the floor now.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for being here and listening to me. I am Lloyd Becker, running for position three of Richland City Council. Now, outside of all my October surprises that came around, but I discuss issues. Issues are some things that we can't get away from, whether you're Democrat, Republican, whatever you wanna call yourself. You have to deal with what goes on every day, every month, and every year because of somebody's political whim. One of the things that I came into this contest with was the $20 car tab and Richland not listening to the residents of the city. Okay. Most of my time, I have been expounding on the car tabs. Now, I put a paper on the back, and it says, "No to the $20 car tab." And it has...okay, it's a blog page up front, but it also references the municipal code, and it also references the RCW. If you're all for the $20 car tabs, then fine. I hate to be seeing somebody's grandma who died because they couldn't get their pills that month. But the city council...let me explain something, what the city council did. In the RMC, they have voted themselves as a independent board for the governing board of the Transportation Benefit District. In other words, if you read this thing and then you read the RCWs, what essentially it does, it shows you how the fox can be in charge of the hen house. And so I do not like foxes in charge of a hen house. The money that was required to build this bridge, when they had moved the city shots across the river back around about 10 years ago, maybe more...but what they did, they were also considering a bridge back then. So what they did is that they had a consultant do some sort of an environmental impact, and this was back in 2009. They knew that they were going to need a bridge back then. They could have taken $100,000, eight years, for 10 years, compounded quarterly at 2%, and it would've gave them $4.415 million today. So who is at fault here? They've been in and out talking about the bridge, but nobody in this room has real full knowledge of the bridge. I still don't have full, full knowledge. But I do know that I found the money that it was necessary to take and build this bridge, counting all of the grant money and everything else that came in from the Fed and the state government. We have still got that money in sight of Richland, and that was the EDC, the Economic Development Committee, declared $2.5 million surplus. One more statement. And the bridge, the consultant said that the bridge will make $40 million in 10 years. Now, this is after it's built. They can do a note and pay the bridge that way. $4 million a year, not shabby. Thank you.
All right. Give Lloyd Becker a big round of applause. Thank you, sir. Okay, good to see you both again. We're gonna hear from these folks from position four for the Richland City Council. It's a four-year term in alphabetical order. They're Ryan Luxon to my right and Ginger Wireman to my left. Let's begin with you, Mr. Luxon, for your opening statement.
Thank you. My name's Ryan Luxon. I'm running for Richland City Council, position four. Just to tell you a little bit about myself to start out...well, actually, I'd like to just thank the League of Women Voters, actually, first of all, before I forget that, for putting on this...oh, sure, for putting on this great event. A little bit about myself, I was born and raised in Richland. My wife and I both graduated from Richland High School. Went off to the University of Washington, where I graduated with a business finance degree. Went off to law school at Florida State and did a couple years of corporate law down in Orlando and in Seattle. And really just didn't feel the sense of community that I grew up with, that I understood. So had a tremendous opportunity to come back and work for Andy Miller at the Benton County Prosecutor's Office. And I loved my job there. I've been there for six years, and I'm a civil deputy prosecutor in the office. And what that means is basically I advise the sheriff's office, the jail, as well as the county commissioners. And what that does is it really gives me a unique perspective on local government that I really don't think is represented on the council or any of the candidates running. And I understand financially, policy-wise, legally, what the city council can and can achieve. And that's really the reason why I decided to run. I thought that I had the skills and experience to really be an asset to the council. And with that, I hope to earn your vote tonight.
Thank you so much. Ms. Wireman?
My name's Ginger Wireman. I'm running for position four. And I also am a Richland Bomber. I moved here in 1979. And when we first lived here, first moved here, we had to live in the campground in Columbia Park because there was no housing available. And so that gave me a really great perspective on living in a community with people in different work and socioeconomic levels. I went away to college and came back and raised my family here. And my main reason for running is I'm really concerned about transparency in government and public engagement. And public engagement is more than just checking a box and saying, "We ran a notice in the paper and nobody showed up to the meeting on a weeknight at 7:00." Or having it in the council chambers when we know it's a contentious issue and there's only room for 60 people, you know, meetings should be moved. Also, meetings don't have to be in a traditional structure. You can take some of these things out to a Saturday event, or do planning in the park, or, you know, at a beer trivia night. Anyway, so that's one thing. I'm really concerned about the urban core and the urban blight that we see, the commercial buildings. We need to be laser-focused on finding some kind of businesses or developers to redo those sites. And lastly, making sure affordable housing is available to everybody and keeping our river shores open to the public. Any development should be either very affordable and appealing to locals, or there shouldn't be any development on the river shore.
All right, thank you both for those opening statements. We'll move on to question number one. Mr. Luxon, we'll start with you. And this is from our audience. The city of Richland has a number of vacant business buildings that often become eyesores to the community. What do you feel the council can do to encourage businesses to fill these vacancies and also for property owners to upkeep their properties to help renew our urban core?
Well, I'm a strong believer that local government is really the jumper cables of the engine. So I feel like right now, in our downtown area, we have maybe a dead battery, and we really need to inject some local revenue into the downtown to help out the local businesses and really to spur economic growth. And I think if we can do that, the issue of the vacant properties will take care of itself. Right now, the downtown, frankly, there's a lot of places that are just not attractive to invest in. And I think we have the ability right now, and we have the local resources, to put some money in the downtown and to really get this thing started. And I think that once you get the ball rolling, I think the rest will take care of itself.
Thank you. Ms. Wireman?
Well, I think there's carrots and sticks. And incentives are great, but we also need to be able and willing to enforce zoning when there are zoning issues. And, you know, there's a lot of creative ways you can go about stuff and help facilitate cooperative businesses, or, you know, Bob talked about not wanting public-private partnerships. But there's all kinds of public-private models that are safe, and the city doesn't get holding the...get stuck holding the bag. But if it can be the battery...I'm gonna steal Ryan's analogy. That's great. And I think that we also really need to look at who we wanna attract. What do we wanna attract? We need to have laser focus on that. We have a group here called Fuse SPC. It's the coworking space off G-Way. They've been doing entrepreneurial trainings and launched like 25, 26 companies, got all kinds of venture capital. We should be talking to these people who are successfully bringing new money in and starting new companies that are not Hanford-related, and ask them what they think and how we can pull more of their friends and family members from Portland and Seattle and San Francisco. And I think that that, by focusing on it and asking hard questions about what we need and what we don't have, we can try to solve these problems. And I think redevelopment, like rethinking it, too, like, could 1200 Jadwin be mixed use? Could it be converted from office to residential? You know, ask those questions.
Thank you so much. We'll move on to question number two. Ms. Wireman, we'll start with you. The city council recently voted three to two to initial approval for restrictive new zoning for Columbia Point South, but the rezone will not be final until the council votes again at a future date. According to media reports, the two of you differ on this decision. Persuade us as to why this new zoning should or should not be approved.
Well, ironically, I don't know who wrote the question, but it was tabled last night because there's some discrepancy as to why certain elements were put in by staff that weren't put in. I don't quite understand what was happening. The reason I don't think there should be extensive commercial development down there, and I hope that they will just take some of these commercial suggestions, like big-box stores...they called it specialty retail, but then a lowercase example was Cabela's. Or a hotel, a four-story hotel, I believe would be inappropriate. I think we have enough lodging within the city limits, probably, right now. And it's just too beautiful a space to be putting that level of commercial intensity. I could foresee putting more, not green park, but maybe park trails, better trails, maybe interpretive signage, perhaps some sort of facility for periodic festivals that last a day or two, but no more than that, so they don't destroy habitat and provide a permanent nuisance of light and noise to the wildlife in the Akama Delta. And I just, I don't think that we can get around the access issue unless we start dumping rocks into the river. And I don't think the Fish and Wildlife Department is gonna let that happen, or it will be a very uphill battle to try and make that pinch point wider and very costly.
Thank you. Mr. Luxon?
You know, ironically, I don't think we actually differ too much. I think the difference that we have is fairly small. I completely agree with Ginger on box stores, and I don't think we need a Cabela's or a four-story, or a four-star hotel. But what I do think is that as a city councilperson, you have to be open to the possibility that if something comes along that is attractive, that you're willing to step up to the plate. And so what I would like to see, first of all, is extend a walking path, maybe some green space to really allow the place to be accessible to more people. I've spent a lot of time down there recently, you know, on the weekends, just to really feel, get a sense of Columbia Point South further. And it's really used by a very limited number of people. And I think for the use that it has, it's very attractive. But I think we also can do some very limited development to make it attractive to more people. And when I say open to the right development, I mean actual small retail restaurants, limited recreational opportunities. I also watched the city council meeting last night and completely agreed that they should have tabled the discussion. They were not on the same page. I don't think there should be RV parks there. They need to really sit down and carefully analyze what we wanna do with that area, and I commit to doing that if I'm on the council.
Thank you so much. We'll move on to question number three. Mr. Luxon, we'll start with you. This is from the audience. It's an interesting question. Why do you think that our crosswalks have little green flags while Kennewick and other jurisdictions have flashing lights and median resting spots? Please explain your answer.
My guess would be to save money. The infrastructure costs of putting in the lights. I do notice, and I think I'm guilty of this, too, you feel a little embarrassed grabbing the little flag, crossing the street, and it's like, do I grab it? Do I not grab it? How busy is it really? You know, you kinda go through the whole walk of shame discussion. So I think that in really high-traffic areas, I think there should be probably flashing lights like other cities have. You know, in places where it's maybe busy a couple times a day, maybe the green flags would be more appropriate. But I do think that...I know I drive every day, drop my son off at daycare on Swift. It's very, very busy, and I see, try to...I see the doctors and nurses try to walk back and forth, and there's not... there's not many green flags that are grabbed, so.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Wireman?
Well, I'm sure it's a cost issue as well. But, you know, we, the city is actually undertaking, is making an official commitment to complete streets, which is an urban design thing that says, you know, walkable, bikeable streets. But they're still resisting simple things like slowing traffic down. And in the comp plan, there was a comment about slowing the traffic down on, I don't remember what section. And the answer was clearly a civil engineer's response of, "That is what the design is allowing." Well, sometimes you have engineering fixes, and sometimes you have human behavior. And perhaps it is time to be logical and look at human behavior and public safety and do the right thing. Because if you set the speed limit at 40, people drive 50. So maybe you need to set the speed limit at 30, so people drive 40. It's just human, I remember now, it was Keen talking about people speeding on Keen. And, you know, the little green flags would be okay, and they're certainly better than nothing, but we've got some brutal sun and they don't even stay bright. So if that's our cheap fix, can we at least replace them two or three times a year so that they're still actually fluorescent flags? So.
Okay. Thank you both. Final question, number four. Ms. Wireman, we'll start with you. Please name one specific direction the current city council is taking that you most support. Now, if elected, what is one specific direction that you will try to change?
Well, they've actually had mixed-use in the comp, it's in the new comp plan, and it was actually in the last comp plan. And I've found that there are actually a number of things that the city says it will do, like the complete streets. But then when push comes to shove, a lot of stuff gets left by the wayside. I just heard an example today when we, I used to be on the Tap Trail Greenway Board and was heavily involved through the, when we built, that got work, started working with Fish and Wildlife to get the Duper Tail landing, and then cleaned up W.E. Johnson Park and started putting signage in W.E. Johnson Park. And when the Drolenger properties went in, the equestrians came to the Greenway, and we specifically told the city we wanted to have an easement because the equestrians had been using that area to ride their horses since, you know, whenever, 1958. And the city assured us that yes, that easement would remain the same. Well, lo and behold, there are now properties that have sold, and people have started building cantilever structures out. And one gentleman actually went down and dug the trail apart so the equestrians can no longer use it. So having something that we make a promise, but then never having the ability to follow up and ground truth and look at what's actually going on in the field is a concern. So what I would like to do is be accountable. If the city's considering a zoning change, I think council needs to go out and talk to neighbors, and we also need to have better public meetings, to find out what's going to actually work, and not just on paper.
Thank you. Mr. Luxon?
Most support. I like what we've done, I'd like to build on it, but with the Swift corridor project, I think is a great start to helping develop downtown, revitalize it, opening up Swift, making it more walkable, bikeable, moving the fire station and City Hall. I think that just the opportunities of engaging, getting more people downtown, which I think we'll go back to the previous question on some of the vacancies, if we can get more people that want to come downtown and live there and work there, and we make it more enjoyable. I think that's a great start. The first thing that I would bring up, if elected, is the pre-meetings that the city council has. I was appalled when I first went to a pre-meeting, working for the county. We don't have anything like that at our county commissioner meetings. You go into a room that has about three chairs for the public to sit at, and it's where the actual discussions of the city council happen. So my first suggestion will be to move that to the main hall. I have no idea why we would need to have that in a room, you know, that fits three people. So I believe in transparency and openness, and that's something that I'm committed to in my job at the county. And it's, I want to bring that experience to the city.
All right. Thank you both. That's going to conclude this segment of this session. I want to thank both of these folks, Ginger Wireman, Wireman, and Ryan Luxon. Thanks so much, guys. Great job. Okay. Running for position seven on the Richland City Council are Michael Alvarez to my right, Dory Luzo Gilmore to my left. Position seven is a two-year term. We've got lots of questions here, so if I don't get to all of them, I apologize. But they're certainly all good ones, so I'll try my best. Mr. Alvarez, you are first for the opening statement.
Oh, first. My name is Michael Alvarez. A little bit about myself, I served in the United States Marine Corps. After that, I attended college. From there, my wife and I moved here to Richland right out of college. We have two children, both born in Richland, both graduated from Richland High School, and both are currently attending WSU right now. Matter of fact, my son is getting ready to graduate this fall. We have been business owners for over two decades, so we know what it takes to be a small business owner and be successful doing so. I currently sit on several volunteer boards, commissions, committees, including as a commissioner for Richland Parks and Recs Commission, and also as an active member of the United States Coast Guard Auxiliary. I believe my 25 years of experience in the finance industry and in business will bring a fresh perspective to the Richland City Council that's much-needed. Let me serve you, and I will work hard to keep fees and taxes low here in the city of Richland. I will also use my finance and business experience to keep Richland's economy strong and healthy. I want our children right out of high school, if they want to go ahead and get a good trade job, to get a job here in Richland. I want our kids, if they graduate from college, to move, be able to move back to Richland and get a good-paying job here to be closer to family as well. Once again, my name is Michael Alvarez. I'm running for Richland City Council. And if I have your vote, I'm asking to ask your friends, family, coworkers, and neighbors to vote for me as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Gilmore?
Thank you, guys, for coming out tonight. I always like these events, over the years, coming to these. You are our uber voters, and I appreciate you guys taking the time to come out and listen to all the candidates. And I thank the League of Women Voters, who put this together to give the opportunity for the uber voters to see our faces. I grew up in Richland, born at Cadillac, my husband as well. I went to this middle school. I did have a few horrifying thoughts when I walked down the hall and someone reminded me it does smell exactly the same. So I live in Richland, and I have for, I came back when I was about 30 and purchased a home. And I did that purposefully. I wanted to raise children here. And my husband and I have ordered our lives, God, family, and everything else, but with everything else as service to my community. I served two terms on the Arts Commission for the City of Richland. I only had two kids back there then, and then I had one more. Now they're five, seven, and nine. And a few years ago, I decided to run for city council. I felt like there needed to be representation from people like me, people at this level, who understand what it's like to try to cross G-Way with the little green flags. As you guys know, no one slows down. It's very hard to get across. And when you're pushing a stroller and you got a toddler and a rotten four-year-old, it is very difficult. And I thought we needed that perspective. So I go to all, oh, she stopped me. Sorry.
You can finish your thought.
Oh, I can finish my thought. I just thought that it's time for we, us, to have representation from moms and community leaders and volunteers, and that's who I am. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll move on to question number one. Mr. Alvarez, we'll start with you. Is there a specific process in place, other than signing up to speak at council meetings, for the city council members to receive citizen input and feedback on both specific topics and overall future directions of the city of Richland? If so, is this current process adequate? If not, what strategies can be used to improve communication between elected officials and citizens?
You know, I know there's different ways to go ahead and contact city council members via email. You can do those type of things. Also, the workshops, as well as the pre-meetings, which I agree that those pre-meetings should be done, probably right there in City Hall, where there's a bigger, where there's a lot more chairs to go ahead and be seated for people to go ahead and watch. For transparency is huge to me. That being said, I've actually started, if I'm elected, started with an outreach program that would go ahead and start in three different areas, in three different parts of Richland, one in north, and then central, and then in south Richland, in different parks where we would have people in those neighborhoods, where it could be, everybody could just walk or drive to those areas, and really meet city council members to go out there. I would probably, to be honest with you, I'd spend my own money from city council and bring lunch to those areas so that people could actually come from those neighborhoods and get to meet me, as well as other people and other leaders within the city of Richland, and find out who we are, what we think about, and what we want to do, and then hear from you. That's important to me, to hear what your ideas would be to bring to city council, and what's important to you. So I think that's something that we've talked about, I've talked about. I've actually put some people in place that I think would be good on the full spectrum. So there's all kinds of people there to get a good idea of what we could go ahead and do and make Richland better. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Ms. Gilmore?
That's a great question. The last two years, I've dedicated to go to all the public meetings for the comprehensive plan, for every budget meeting, every city council, all my liaison positions. And I am very accessible. In fact, today, I had two phone calls from voters looking for my opinion on issues, because my number's out there. I answer all my emails. I've been very engaged. When the Rachel Road extend, Rachel Road meetings were going on, I went to all of them, one in a blizzard, and go out there to talk to the stakeholders. Because I think it's important that there is a council presence at those meetings. And I took it upon myself, with this position, goes back to my idea of service, to be at those things and to be accessible. I always walk around and make sure that I talk to the citizens and thank them for coming, and I appreciate that. In fact, I, at the last one of the comprehensive plan meetings, I met a traffic engineer. And I am certainly not a traffic engineer. But I had the opportunity to speak to that person and to get to know them, and to get their opinion on things. There is areas of growth for me, and that person has helped me learn more. And that was because of that citizen involvement. So I think council has the ability to do it. It takes a lot of work. And I have shown that I am willing to do that, and I continue to do that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll move on to question number two. This is from the audience. Pretty long one, so listen closely. There is a lot of sprawling McMansion developments that are expanding the city's road and utility networks and increasing the future maintenance burden. This type of development is cheaper for developers. Richland has four Title I schools. Jefferson Elementary has 74% poverty, but all children do better with economically and racially diverse student bodies. So here's a question. How would you encourage development that maintains the vitality of older neighborhoods protecting property values and strong schools?
Is a long question. Okay, so let's tackle it from where I come from. I grew up seven blocks from here. And my house now is just across, just north of Safeway. So I understand the older neighborhoods. My parents' neighborhood, they still live in the same A-house I grew up in. It's entirely rentals around where they live. And I believe there is something we can do with the community police force that we have. They do an excellent job. And the police department do really well, and the code enforcement do really well. And there's many community groups here in the city that help people, if they are fallen on hard times, to get their properties in shape. And I understand our schools, we need to make sure they're adequately funded. Of course, the city doesn't do that, as you guys all know. But there is things that we can do to make sure that the neighborhoods are not neglected. We do have some areas of concerns with crime in our city, and the police department has done a really good job of addressing those issues. I went down to all the coffees with the cops and the pizza with the polices, just to talk to them. Because in my neighborhood, there's been a huge increase of shoplifting at the local stores. So it is a hard thing for a city. I certainly do not want to see our downtowns neglected. I live there. I walk there. I take my kids there. And we want to make sure that we maintain those corridors, and we want to make sure that we continue to help our citizens maintain their properties. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Alvarez?
Okay. You know what I'm going to do is I'm going to, if you would, at least read, yeah.
All right. I'm used to reading the teleprompter, so let's see, give us another shot. All right. There's a lot of sprawling McMansion development that is expanding the city's road and utility network, increasing the future maintenance burden for the city. This type of development is apparently cheaper for developers. Richland has four Title I schools. Jefferson Elementary has 74% poverty, but all children do better with economically and racially diverse student bodies. So here's a question. How would you encourage development that maintains the vitality of older neighborhoods protecting property values and strong schools?
You know, that's a tough question, because I know one of the things, like Dory was talking about, there's a lot of rental properties in central Richland and areas like that. And so I think code enforcement can do some work to go ahead and keep some of the properties up. But more importantly, for the schools, I think we need to go ahead and just make, matter of fact, isn't Jefferson, Jefferson is actually being rebuilt right now and being reconstructed. So that's one of the first steps to go ahead and complete right there, as far as the school districts are concerned, and that school. And also, just to go ahead and have more presence of maybe having city council members and other community leaders going out there and showing, being more role models. I think we're lacking role models in our community. And I don't think that's a bad thing to do, to go ahead and have more role models going out there and being out in the community and going to those schools and helping teach and doing more things like that within those communities. I think we can go ahead and talk and maybe incentivize more landlords to go ahead and keep their properties up as well. And I know that as far as the housing market in central Richland, that's pretty strong right now. Our housing market is really strong, and house prices have gone up, and they're continually to go up in those areas as well. And if we bring more, if we fill the pit, as we're doing with mixed-use, and the city hall is being torn down, and we bring in businesses there rebuilt to go ahead and bring more economic development through there, I think as we bring that forward, that's going to bring those neighborhoods even up more and help everybody concerned. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks a lot. Okay. We'll move on to question number three. Mr. Alvarez, we'll start with you. Are there areas in the current city budget where you would like to see an increase or decrease in spending? And why do you think this change in spending would benefit the city of Richland?
I think the increase for spending would be on our parks and trails. Matter of fact, those little yellow flags, I'd like to go ahead and see more money invested in flashing lights and for crosswalks, especially in congested areas such as GWA. I've tried to cross that area a few different times myself. And I think that would be a first step as far as some of the infrastructure that needs to be done. So as far as the parks, trails, libraries, I know there's going to be roofs that need to be replaced on our maintenance shops. Those were only put in with 15-year roofs, instead of 30-year roofs, to save a little bit of money. That doesn't make sense to me. But that's going to cost the taxpayers a lot of money. So I think we just have to make sure that we're using our funds wise on that. As far as a reduction in cost, I'd like to go ahead and look at that Duper Tail Bridge project. I've always said there's additional funds to go ahead and fund that and reduce that down to zero. Richland, when we started, that was a $4 million balance on that. It's about $1.7 million now. I still think we can go ahead and get that down to zero and reduce that car tab or eliminate it altogether. We don't need to go ahead and pay for that. There's some differences that we see on that. I think we can use our funds better. And having my 25 years of finance experience, I know we can do better, especially with that car tab. And we can use those funds in different ways to help fund different projects within the city of Richland.
Thank you. Ms. Gilmore?
So it was two weeks ago, I believe, that we got the preliminary budget handed to us. And it's a thick book, and it's small type, and it's a spreadsheet about this big on every page. And I've taken it home and went through it. And the projects that we are going to fund this next year are, I think, appropriate. And the budget looks good. We're only growing a few percentage points over what we spent last year. Clearly, what the citizens of Richland love, as the community surveys say, are our parks, our libraries. They want to see improvements in the downtown. And I think one of the great improvements we already broke ground on is our new city hall. And it's going to be built to high-green standards, which I think in our environmental community is going to be great. I wish it could be higher, but of course, that's an expensive option. And we have improved things like in the library, we just opened the new steam space. That's an important part of our educational programs. I always say the library is the jewel of our city, and I spent a lot of time there. And you guys should too. It's really a wonderful location. We are spending money appropriately on new projects and looking at expanding our parks. I believe we have one new park coming in next year, and we want to make sure that we appropriately keep up the ones we have. Thank you.
Thanks so much. We'll move on to question number four. Ms. Gilmore, we'll start with you. And this comes from our audience. Lately, our local politics have become highly corrosive, with several candidates being bullied to the point of needing police protection. When does political debate become bullying, and what, if elected, will you do to bring the city of Richland together?
Wow, I wonder who we're talking about. It has become very divisive, and I think that's intentional on some people's parts. And unfortunately, I am not that person. I often think... I often think my motto is do small things with great love, and I don't believe that we should have that in politics, and I do not believe we should be treating people that way. Obviously, I've been treated very poorly in this election cycle, and I don't know why. I think people should take the time to really research what we do at City Council, really find out what the job is, and not make it about personal attacks. You could learn the job and make it about learning how to run a city and not take it to that level. So I would hope, moving forward, after I'm elected in November, that we can have a City Council that can meet the citizens. I've obviously been accessible, and I'll continue to do that. Anyone that knows me knows that I am a person that can be talked to. Maybe we don't agree on subjects, maybe I won't agree with your decisions, and maybe you don't sometimes agree with mine, but I believe I am a person that you can talk to, and I will continue to do that.
Thank you. Mr. Alvarez?
You know, I have a human resource management degree, and I took that degree because I really cared about equal pay, equal rights, discrimination. So I really took that to hand. And in my job, we're required, we're required to go ahead and do a discrimination disclosure saying we're non-discriminatory in our living practices, based off all kinds of reasons. You know, I serve on a lot of voluntary boards, and we work well as groups and teams every day, and we've, and it doesn't matter who the person is, we just, I just don't believe in that. I'm pretty well-liked, I get along with people, I think I'm a good team person, and in this case here, unfortunately, I would agree. Some of the things I've seen has just been appalling to me. It's been upsetting to me. As a faith-based person, I just cannot see some of the things that have gone on. And if elected, I will definitely fight to go ahead and see those things aren't given, because I can tell you right now, I'm kind of emotional about it, because I just don't believe some of the things that have gone on in this race. As far as that's concerned, I think I've just, I pretty much said what I said on that. We just need to go ahead and move forward and put that kind of poisonous thing away. It doesn't matter what party, it doesn't matter what party you're within. We all have to work together and bring people back together. That's super-important to me. Thank you.
All right. Thank you both. That's gonna conclude the position seven race. Want to thank Michael Alvarez, Dory Luzo Gilmore.
Vote for Dory.
All right. Thank you both. Great job. Good job. Thanks a lot, Mike.
Appreciate your job.
All right. Want to thank everyone, thank everybody out there. That completes tonight's forum. Want to be sure to thank Richland School District for allowing us to use the building. Also, Mike Charbonneau and his entire crew, we appreciate their efforts. This is going to be on Richland City View 192 and YouTube. And if you have moved here from another state and have not yet registered to vote, you may still do so in person at the Benton County Auditor's Office up until October 30th.